So we'll follow the regularly scheduled school board meeting. First item in the agenda is approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve. So.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Here none, I will. All pagers say aye. All opposed nay. And I will exchange. Next item is the approval of the non-politician minutes.
Make a motion to approve the non-politician minutes.
Sorry. Big joke. And any further discussion on that? We all as a favor, some of us again. Aye. All opposed. Yeah, I will say. Next on the agenda is the educational focus component of the program's evening, which is the presentation about the NECC part.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. All right, I'm Christine Morris from the New England Center for Children. I oversee our classrooms and our services to public schools in most of New Hampshire and parts of Vermont, New York, mostly rural regions. So we're going to do a quick presentation, give a little bit of an overview of what the partner classroom is, the Lincoln Partner Classroom in particular, and then give you some progress updates. All right, so I'll briefly go into what NECC and the partner program is. And then I'll hand it over to Jen Kebler, who will talk about the partner program and how it started up. And then the teacher of the partner program, Angela Joke, will give an overview of student progress, and then we'll take questions. So the New England Center for Children opened in 1975. It's a private nonprofit educational research center. It was previously named the New England Center for Autism, but in 1996, it changed its name to acknowledge that, or to make it clear, that our services benefit various profiles of students and not just students with autism. We have a private school and research facility based in South Rome, Massachusetts, and we provide services to public schools throughout New Hampshire, Vermont, Maine, Massachusetts, and New York. We have partner classrooms across four states, similar to the one that we have at Linwood. And we also provide consultation, training, evaluations, and a specialized curriculum. All right, so partner program was developed in collaboration with special education administrators, and the first classroom opened in 1998. And the primary purpose of the classroom was to keep students in their community schools. So we had a special education administrator approach us and asked us if we would work with him to try to replicate some of the services that we provide in our schools. And it was very successful. And so now we have 59 classrooms across four states. We're serving over 500 learners, and we have 20 classrooms right now in New Hampshire. That includes 11 elementary, three middle, and six high school. And the primary purposes of the partner program, like I said, is to provide services for students in their community schools, so to help keep students from needing to go out of district to get specialized services. We support students in collaboration with districts, with parents, and with other service providers. We provide comprehensive and individualized services for learners with a range of needs. Another purpose of the partner program is to increase successful inclusion opportunities for students, so they're really participating in general ed classes and being part of their school community. And the ultimate purpose is to increase independence and skills to the point where we can fade supports over time so that they can move to less restrictive placements. Now I'm going to hand this over to Jen Kebler, who is the BCBA and the clinical supervisor for the partner program.
Thank you, Christine. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. So we opened the Linwood Elementary Partner Program in September of 2018. We got program approval from the New Hampshire Department of Education for five eligibilities, and those are autism developmental delay, emotional disturbance, other health impairments, and speech and language impairment, so we can admit students with a range of eligibilities into the Linwood Partner Program. All five approved disabilities have been addressed since the partner program began in 2018. We opened the classroom with five students. Across the last four years, we've had a total number of students, 10 students that we've had come in and out of the classroom. And then we have successfully transitioned one student to a less restrictive placement over last year. So Christine, you can move to the next one. Angela Joke, who is our lead teacher, she's there full-time. She's a full-time master's level lead teacher and a BCBA. I am there part-time, so I'm there one full day onsite, and then I'm available to the classroom throughout the week. We have access to the New England Center for Children ACE online educational system, as well as access to district-wide curricula that we do use across all our students. We have access to the New England Center for Children clinical and educational resources. Linwood employs their one-on-one paraeducators, but we train them and continue to do ongoing training with them, and they're co-supervised by us and Linwood administrative administration. We offer parent clinics once a month and parent training throughout the year. We do a lot of collaboration with other service providers, such as social workers, the school psychologists, the general educators, the contracted related service providers, and we do a lot of work with the community support services as well. And we have a partnership with the school and district administrators. Go ahead, Christine.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Before we move on from this slide and talk about our progress updates, I'd love for you to observe the beautiful artwork of one of our students. We have a bunch of budding artists. All right, Christine, you can go ahead and move forward. So one of the ways that we want to show our progress is through student inclusion, as was mentioned, having the partner program allows for students to be included within their general education setting. So if you look over, we have a duration of minutes and the average in time that students were included per day across, I can't scroll the bottom, but for five students across the bottom for a series of years since we started in Linwood. So in the first year, you see that we started having inclusion, that's in the blue. So each student had some inclusion time, and it, everyone's was increasing as time went on. And then in 2019, that was looking great and increasing, and then COVID hit, and we ended up going remote. So for the rest of that year, although it looks pretty good, we went remote. Then when you get into 2020 with the gray, it was following the return from COVID. So there's definitely some decreases for some of our students there. And some of that was due to settling back into school, and some of that was due to us trying to keep students safe, you know, ensuring that they were able to wear masks before they could even be included, and just making sure that we were limiting where students were going due to COVID. And then when you look at 2021, so where we are now, we're only, you know, we are still pretty early on in the year, and inclusion time is looking good across the board and increasing. So that's where we stand, and hopefully we'll continue to move on. And then another thing that we wanted to share was behavior reduction. So our goal is to decrease challenging behaviors while increasing positive social behavior. And noncompliance is a behavior of concern. It's when students do not do what is expected of them. And again, we have five students across the years, and student noncompliance, if you look for most of the students, except for student five, has been decreasing across the years. And for students five, we're working on, we've just put programming in place to hopefully work towards decreasing noncompliance. And then aggressive behavior was definitely a behavior that was very present when we first started. It's a behavior of concern because it's unsafe. And it's also the kind of behavior that gets kids suspended from school without a specialized program, such as the partner program. And I mean, I think the most important part of the data for four students, four of the five students that had aggression, is that if you look for that nice mustardy color for 2021, is that it's not currently present. So we do not have much aggressive behavior in our program, especially across these students. So the progress, they have made a lot of progress, and which leads to the time and inclusion. Go ahead, Christine. So some highlights from last year into this year. So for the 2021 school year, students made progress, 81, they met or made progress toward 81% of their annual IEP goals in the partner program. They met or mastered or mastered or made progress towards 91% of goals targeting challenging behaviors for reduction. And then more exciting is that students are really starting to participate in their classrooms more and in extracurricular activities, sometimes out of classroom times, they're participating in band, in joining other after-school programs. Just super exciting that they are truly becoming part of their community and are considered part of their community. And for six out of seven students, they attend group instruction in social skills, math, and literacy. They attend these sometimes in their general education setting and sometimes in small groups within the partner program classroom, with a great emphasis on social skills. And next slide. So something that's kind of exciting is what our students think of the partner program. So here are some thoughts from our students. So I'm going to start in this maroonish colored bubble and read, and I will tell you each color as we go, and these are from different students within our program, so what they like. So this one says, "I get to be with my friends, I get to help my teachers. If work is too hard in my class, I can go to the partner room to do my work." So they really, they feel like they have a place. In the pink bubble at the top, "The partner program means a lot to me. It has helped me in so many ways with focusing in school and behaving more. Like, it's helped me to realize everything I've done in my past is not really right. It's really just really special to me because I kind of need the help. Even though when I was little, I didn't like it. I found some things I liked about it. The partner program helped me to grow and learn more things." In the yellow bubble, "When I do math, I can do a little trade-in. I really like it because it makes me feel good. I have great teachers. It's a good place because I have my own space to work." In the green bubble, "It's fun and you make friends. I can also focus better now that I'm in the partner program." And lastly, in blue, "It teaches children a lot. I like how much they taught me over the years and how much I changed from one little program." So just some thoughts from our kids. And then if we move on to the next slide, we have a written example. So this was actually written in class. So this student tells us, "What I like about Linwood is that Linwood has a partner program. I also like Linwood's playground. I think the teachers are nice. I like the free times that we have. I also like our specials. Lastly, I love Linwood. I have to say, I love Linwood too, but what I love about this is that this student and all of our students really love coming to school, and school should be a place that kids want to be. Students should want to come to school and want to learn." It's very exciting. Christine, go ahead. In addition to that, when we were telling parents that we were going to share some updates tonight, they wanted to send along letters, and there's some, these are excerpts from those letters. So I will read these, and there were so much more that they shared. It's hell of a very surprising and kind to say. So the first one says, "My son has been in the program for a few years now, and I can't believe the difference that has made in his life. My husband and I were trying to decide if we could homeschool them, or if we had to send him to a special school for him to be able to get his education. The difference is remarkable. He is doing great in school, making friends, and we are a normal family now. The first time he came home with a great report, I cried. This program has given my son his childhood and his education. That is absolutely priceless, and I will be grateful forever for it." The next one says, "Honestly, I don't think my son would have had the success that he's having without the partner program. I truly think he has grown leaps and bounds with the assistance from the partner program, and that is the honest truth." And the last one, "Before the partner program," so talking again about their son, "he had difficulty staying in the class, controlling his emotions, being able to self-regulate when things became too overwhelming at school and at home. He didn't have peer relationships with classmates. He often felt he didn't belong and just struggled getting through the day. Things were similar at home as well. The partner program was able to give him a space to feel comfortable, safe, and accepted while learning the necessary skills and tools to be successful throughout the day. He has grown tremendously over the last few years, and we as parents have learned how to work with him to be successful at home. He has repaired peer relationships and often comes home talking about many positive peer interactions. We have had classmates for playdates, and they have all been successful. Academically, our son has made huge gains now that he's available to learn and participate in his lessons." All right. And then I believe, if we move on to the next slide, we can take questions.
I'm going to change. Does anyone have any questions?
Right. Can I just ask a quick one? What is, I see one student was sent to a less restrictive placement. Is that onsite, offsite? What is considered a less restrictive placement?
So that student, and Angela and Jen may be able to give you more information, but that student started off as one of the first students in our program and transitioned out of the program and no longer, and receives different supports now. So is no longer one of the students placed in our program because the student no longer needed that level of support.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? The full letters that Angela read excerpts from, I believe that you have in your handout packets, so you'll be able to read all of them.
I see there's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of good stuff in here that this program is doing. Is there anything that we could do as a board to support and make it better? Is there anything that the program can do better for us, or anything we can do to help?
I'm going to leave that to Angela and Jen.
I mean, you guys can write an answer into me. I guess I don't need that right this second, but I was just curious. I mean, I see a lot of good stuff, and I hear a lot of good stuff about the program. But there has to be the other side of it, too. If there's anything that we can do better, we can put more stuff in place for you, or I know it was supposed to be a three-year program, but I'd just like to know if there's anything that we can do to help you.
You know, honestly, we have incredible support from the board and from admin, which makes it on our end really easy. And it, you know, the collaboration that we have with everybody is incredible and really makes our program run smoothly. So thank you to all of you guys for such, for so much support over the last four years.
Thank you.
Of course. One of the things that is limiting about the program here is it goes through fifth grade, the program is in this building, and eventually the kid's born. That must be born to higher grades of middle school. And one nice thing that really helped that was that child didn't just leave in June the partner program and go off to sixth grade. That child received support from Jen, guidance teachers. She consulted with the teachers. We did a, they did a slow transition with a lot of support to the teachers. The student had a really tremendous aide who was with him and has been trained to work with the student during the middle school classes. The only thing that I would say is that some children have managed to be done to create and move on with that amount of support. We don't know if that's going to work that way for all kids. But the NECC program, they have been, Angela and Jen especially, on the boot people, have been amazing with giving school to middle school. What we might want to do more, might need something happening in the middle schools.
Like a facility that may have to support it?
Yeah. It depends on the needs of the students, where we go with it, how well they've made progress, some students more than others, because of the disabilities are able to be making good progress, that middle school will be reachable for them. It's going to be difficult, the reality of life. So other than that, that's really all I can say is, I think that when it was presented to the board, I wasn't here, so I can't really say to you, this is what was planned. I've heard people reference three years.
Yes.
What a great idea, is all I can say. And with some kids, that's probably with other children. So, but I will say that as much as possible, reach children in the regular classrooms. And the teachers get amazing support from the end. In the inclusionary process, so they're in and out of the room, and it's just benefiting Linwood, it's benefiting the teachers, it's benefiting the children most of all. They're careful. So that's.
May I ask, do you think there's a need right now for a really special education life skills program in the middle high school right now?
There is no. There's not a need for it.
Not the need right now.
No. Not right now.
Is it, you're thinking that it may get to that?
Down the road, there may be a student or two that needs to have that. Hard to say, because they're little, they're young. But.
I just didn't know if you knew something.
No. I wish I could say, yeah, I was principal all.
Well, no, I mean, you are, you know, the students.
Yeah.
We are in the school on a daily basis.
I think that, I think that as long as the board continues to support the needs of these kids as they enter middle school with the consultation by Jen and by Angela, you know, we do pay for the program for a finite number of kids in the program. And what they did, which was amazing, they continued to support the child last year going to sixth grade, even though he wasn't necessarily taking the slot. They gave him all the consultation, gave the teachers all the consultation they needed. So they go over and above, honestly.
Nice to hear.
It's amazing. I've never, I've been doing this as a director for 20 years. I have never seen, swear to God, anything work like this. I have never seen this. This is amazing what they do. So, and I've worked in big districts. I was in Berlin. 20 years of my career was spent in the schools in Berlin. I've never seen anything like this. What we have here in this school for our kids is incredibly special and saving the taxpayers a lot of money, a lot of money. As you know, one out of this replacement. I say it, people think that, oh, she just blows smoke. This isn't the way it works. We, this is what's out there. And being able to have the children stay in their homes with their parents, in their schools, with their friends, is amazing. You're very lucky. Whoever, whoever did this, and I honestly don't know who planned this whole thing that was here, was someone who did an amazing thing for the.
What is the process for?
Who does to owe you?
What is the process for a student getting into the program?
So what we do, you guys want to talk about that? Because you guys, basically, we gather a lot of data. We have to wait till it's an opening, but we gather a lot of data, and we, they speak to the parents, we speak to the parents, we discuss the data, we have IEP meetings, and we really, with any IEP meetings, we look at the needs of the child. And sometimes it can be a quick process, sometimes it takes a while to get the data we need or to get a slot open. But that's how it works. It's a needs, very definitely a needs-based program.
So it's the school's recommendation and the parents?
It's a, it's a team, an IEP team, in which parents have to agree to have the child taken on. Like anything, a parent of a student with a disability or has an IEP has to agree to the child's placement for education. Without the parent agreeing, you can't place the child in the program. You can only do the best you can do with a bunch of talent. So it's very, very collaborative, very collaborative. Angela talks, Angela's in constant contact with parents. There are parent meetings every month that she has with parents. It's much different when we didn't have that. But there's ongoing consultation, ongoing phone calls, texts. These parents have seen the texts, you know, text back and forth to the parents. She, before COVID, went to the homes, she does now, but it's definitely very collaborative.
Nobody has really mentioned, not because my wife is one, but nobody has mentioned the parents, that this program doesn't exist without the parents.
That's right. And I'm sorry, that's absolutely true.
100%. We couldn't do it without our pairs and our team. Our team is, it's really, really special. We all are, it's, it's a true team. Everyone is supportive of each other, and it's definitely been a challenging few years. And I don't mean just as we work through things with students, but COVID has been, they are always willing to jump to the occasion to try anything, and they do it with a smile and a positive attitude. So yes, our pairs, we wouldn't be anything without them. We wouldn't be able to do anything without them.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you for taking the time to meet with us and provide us with the presentation. We always appreciate hearing from folks that serve us, and thank you for the work that you do on behalf of the students in the district.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
It's the next portion of our agenda, communication. What do you see? Do you, it was me.
Okay, the correspondence that came was the NECC letter.
Oh, right.
That's, that's one of the things we're worried about. And the NECC letter just explains that some of the procedures that we've put into place. And if you look at the NECC letter, that is, that is going to be something at the bottom of the front page, is the components that we will be putting into the report card.
Yeah, and I think what was. Yeah, and I think what was helpful, and I didn't, or at least was interesting for me, that wasn't included in the packet, was the sort of attachment that they sent, which was the things that, just for informational purposes, I guess, it's the things that like, they put our, our date for research issue or reassessment out a little bit because of them recently, it sounded like in the letter anyway. But they give us a list of things that if any of these things change, and the way that we have to resubmit that to them for, to make sure.
We have many correspondences with them throughout the years so that we give them updates all the time and say, we're needing this, we're doing this, and they're okay. It's definitely a two-way street.
Yeah, and I don't know if anyone else is interested, I can, I'll forward the email to you, but it just had like an appendix to this that basically was like, you know, these are the things that we look for if you're making any material changes to these aspects of your curriculum or staffing or anything like that. Let us know so we can reevaluate. It was interesting to see what they were looking at for.
And the other was just a, just reminding that the NCS news letter was in the packet.
Yeah, in your blue folders, there's a lot, this is a lot of stuff in the folders today, but each year, for those of you who have been on the board and those that are new, the annual school board payment, which we usually do in December, right, for Christmas, or like our next payroll, so there's paperwork in the blue folder for you to fill out and get back to us as soon as possible. Also, I included in your packet, because we had a little discussion last week during the budget session on, just gave you a snapshot of where we are for this year, this school year to date. So it's a one pager, very high level, but really we're 42% away to this, we have July through November. We're pretty much, so it shows our actual expenditures percent spent, and then encumbrances. So that's really a lot of that's payroll or any contracts that we have that we know about and an estimate of the budget monies left. But one of the questions that came up was about subs, like if we felt like we had enough money in our budget for subs, so two, five months, our sub budget is a total of 70,000 and 50,000 in our regular ed, 20,000 in special ed. And so we've 70,000, we've spent 18,927% of that. So I mean, I think what we talked about last week will probably be in pretty good shape. But if you have any other questions.
Is there a projected, maybe $80,000?
Yeah, no, it would probably be less than that. Again, because all the encumbrances, I don't have everything encumbered in there, but looking at some of our accounts, I mean, I know that some lines were going to be. Especially that we've already discussed, but yeah, so no, it will be less than that. I think we're in pretty good shape. That's all I have.
Sorry, Judy.
My group now is seeking, still continuing to seek out some students who are interested in being student dropped. One of, one of the suggestions was, well, they came, and we set it up so that they would be presenting at the beginning of the meeting, then if that, if that was a worse item for them, then we could, you know, change it around a little bit if they had a meeting.
Yeah, I think if there was a student or students interested in, you know, being student.
We did have a facilities committee meeting at 5:30, and Brian will be reporting on the outcome of that meeting and action will be taken based on that meeting. Let's see, obviously, we had, we did have the pre-bid conference on the, on Tuesday, the 30th, for the HVAC system, and that is what Brian will be reporting on because the bits did come in and the committee. Unfortunately, the district did not receive the grant money for the school energy efficiency development, that seed grant that we had enough to try. And so, you know, just kind of keep continuing, anytime a bracket comes up, we'll take advantage of it and continue to look into it.
Is there something specifically we had like sort of pegged that for, or is that just, is that just?
There were specific timelines, so the elementary wouldn't get into this. But a bunch of sessions, we have another one next week, but didn't know if the board is thinking of questions or anything that they want us to research and have that information for you. You do have a presentation, Trey, we do presentations, the technology, but it didn't count for something else in the, in the big picture of things that you would want somebody to present to the board. And that doesn't have to be at next meeting, can be at a board meeting as well. But if you have any thoughts or questions about that. The strategic plan has come to a close. We, we thought we were going to have all the revisions, but right now we just, we don't have them quite done, so we will be presenting that to the board at the next, definitely at the next meeting. But we can also send it before the next meeting too. But the meetings themselves are complete, and we're just gathering more information to add to it and revising what input the committee members gave. Let's see, in the packet, you did, you received the email that we received from the New Hampshire Department of Ed regarding the changes that needed to be done in the reopening plan. It's the, you know, right before your reopening plan in your packet. And they're, it's all in red, all of your revisions were done in red and. I'd like it in red. And once we review those changes, I just wanted to have another vote from the board. So you got to bring that forward to the department before December 23rd. And then here, LIU plan is at the Department of Ed, they have not returned it yet. So as soon as they return it, we'll do the revisions of the small forms and break boards and what I just didn't want you to think of. But they have it now, and from time to time, I would call them, state reminding of that. You know, they're looking at, but I know they're very busy too. The rest we can do in, throughout the agenda.
Is, is the reopening plan, I think we're looking for some action on this evening?
On the reopening plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if anyone, does anything?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, thanks for having me. There's not a whole lot going on right now. We're just trying to make it through to vacation. We have started sports. It seems to be going well. Like Judy said, I have a group of students who are interested in attending. They're trying to come up with an agenda for items to talk about, and we are also looking to maybe work together as partners. We'll probably start the first board meeting in January, if that's okay with you. And we're looking to have about six or seven people said they were interested, but they didn't give me a final response yet. But several of them said it's a really good idea, and they're pretty enthusiastic about it. So that's kind of all I have going on right now, other than it's just a busy time. And what I hear is you have some snow down there, which is kind of opposite of up here. I don't have any. So we're just kind of trying to get through these next two weeks.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Committee. You got the facilities, that's going to be a big one. Is there any strategic plan, anything else you've got minutes if you want to talk about that at all? And specifics of that, yeah, I'm already talking about.
On the committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, just the facilities.
No, we just have the. All right, we'll start with. The main thing we spoke about is the proposal for the. For the elementary schools. But before we get there, just touch on a couple of things. They started putting together a draft for the. Capital was pretty much fine. We had a few notes that we were looking at, so we're going to, I guess, keep plugging away at that time. Just filling space, voids on things and trying to make things, I guess, short. Example, like flooring projects, making it more of a broke breakdown than just flooring, since it does take 10 years to look comfortable. Maybe calling it phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four underneath that subsection. Just little things. Anybody have any questions? I guess in some things, and if anybody takes a look at it, or if somebody does, maybe there's something else they want to edit, some of them are just kind of like one and done projects. You know, my biggest concerns are based around the large projects and how do we build those out so that there is money 10 years down the road? So that was that. I guess the big one is the bid form for the elementary school. So we got a bid back. Two kind of, we got one that doesn't have employees, so they leave the equipment at the doorstep, you have to figure it out. Essentially, that's kind of, you know. There's not enough people, I guess, around it now, even for company giants like Stevens to get through this, so they gave us the best they could. The other side. No, $800,000. That's great. We decided as a, as a group committee to throw a Daniel Hebert, who is somebody that has been recognized by, yeah, as a quality contractor. Their face was 621,425, they had one notation, and women's bond added. I mean, as a committee, we're ready to move, and the sooner we move, the better, because we have, we want the project to get done. Then they have questions on this. Jay? So we basically have one real good. Yeah. And the, what's that, how does that compare to what we anticipated? So I have that, so not anticipated, but let's say it changed from, the bond was for 540,000, what we had been built off of last year. However, we couldn't get it anybody last year. Prices change, things have changed. It puts us in at roughly $80,000 short on the project cost, but in the trust fund, there's currently $179,000 that we could pay out the difference. Look at the other things. So, yeah, it would be at 621, which is again, and then this came up with about 88,000 with all the. There's mathematics. There is another thing in there that's $50,000, 50,678. I asked, committee asked as a whole, I give more information. I don't know what in quotes, name of infection control devices, $50,000. However, we've been abundantly clear that we're comfortable with spending $50,000 in a project this size, but I just want more information on that. Well, I mean.
I mean, we did try last.
I guess essentially, I, I can go ahead and make a motion and then.
Did Wayne Julian bet this bid? He did.
Did he bet them?
Did he, did he look at the bid, the one that he wanted?
Yeah, they worked together. Yes, and he's a cook of the works, right? So it's sort of on him to make sure that it's in that bid document. I think he's been here in the past, because he's familiar with this project because it's been going on. He would be using trade products? And you said last week, didn't get any bids last time?
Well, yeah, so I mean, again, the project was approved last March, we went out to bid, nothing came back, and that's when we said, okay, let's wait, let's regroup. Because it's a bonded project, so there's a bond sale twice a year, this last July, this one coming up in January. So we have to make a commitment by tomorrow to the bond bank if we're going to move forward.
But the bond rates right now, they're not better than the max, are they? We just looked, the local banks are better than the bond bank.
Last time I checked, the bond bank was still there. I, I got rates from some banks, and it was still, banks were a couple of percentage points above.
The good thing about it, the bank, if you can come in at or below, is that if there's anything left over, you can give it back to the bank.
Right, and that's why we needed to know, are we going to move forward or not? It's going out right now.
Do you have to make a commitment with the bond bank tomorrow?
Yeah, to be included in this sale. And that's why we moved up the bid date too.
And if the bank rates go down prior to.
Because I got a couple quotes from local banks, I got two or three quotes, and they were a couple points ahead, uh, higher than the bond. That was about. You know, I mean, going with a regular bank, it gives you a little bit more flexibility, you know, so we don't go, we don't go with the bond bank, we could take the chance and qualify.
Yeah, we hit to get chance, because.
Yeah.
Could go the other way.
But the bond bank rates, again, they, they're a couple points for those.
In the intent would be to take additional money out of the.
Yeah, we know we're not going to have any money left over.
So we're going to have to prepaid, we can't prepaid. Do you need a, do you need a vote?
I just.
I made a motion to.
Well, I remember making a difference.
No, we hope different. I make a motion to accept the bid of Daniel Hebert Incorporated, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars for the elementary school.
Yep. You put in the discussion from that? Yes.
Do you need the additional in there, Ben?
I wanted to add the old, that's what I was getting, also including an add-on alternative up to fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars, once more device info has been received.
They have to take that, they're gonna pass that on to us, we talked to.
So what's the, do we have a total?
Why did, I just did six, twenty-eight, eight fifty-six, I haven't added anything. All three of them are six, seven, nine, five, three, four. So the total amount of six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-four.
And so if we, if we vote to approve, to, to approve the bid or accept the bid here, full amount, ultimately with a second option, we can take the fifty out of fifty. That's what, this is. I guess we could make the
So I guess, uh, there's been some amendments to the motion second at this point. That the number is six hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. Is there any further discussion about that? All those in favor of accepting Daniel Hebert's bid and the total amount of the six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars, this signify by saying aye? Aye? And that motion compares. Is there any? Policy committee.
There was Matt's and Doug's meeting notes of these, uh.
On the first reading?
Yeah, they will, it's not the second reading. It was probably, you had a question about?
Yeah.
It was answered, already.
Good to know.
I don't remember what the answer was, but I do remember it because it's.
It was in Judy's, uh, superintendent's memo last time.
There you go, yeah, you weren't here, we answered it when you got, we answered your question when you weren't here.
That's right.
Yep. That chapter.
Really noteworthy about the ones that I asked for shooting with me.
I mean, so. Going through the minutes of the meeting. Oh, yeah, it was, actually. J I C C and J I C C are the appeals process. They stayed with the policy committee. Yeah, those three have it. So they are not. Okay, then, yeah, no, just a second. Thank you.
Okay, then I will accept the motion to move policies F B H G G B I, I H P M A, I K F, I K F dash R, I L B A, I L B A A, J C A, J F A, J F A B B, J F A B E, J I C D, J J A, J J I B, J J J, J L C J A, two second reading. Thank you. Uh, improve discussion on that. All those in favor, at least whoever's saying aye. Those opposed, whoever's saying nay. Uh, and then I will accept the motion to approve policy I K as.
Some of it.
Thank you, Derek.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Move by Tammy, second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Paris. And is there any other business with policy? Moving up, uh, staff nominations, recommendations, designations? So covered the elementary school bids. The other the S S A application. The support staff. Let's.
Jamie Johnson, did you want to go over that, or?
You have the. Yeah, I added this.
Yes, I did.
But that should be in the phone.
Well, I can't vote on it, yeah. But you guys have to talk about it, page and table.
Keep it on shot, good. Let's see, really, because this is the public debt.
No, they have to be a change.
Is that mentioned? I mean, it, everything that we changed or negotiated, we should say, is here, and is there any questions specifically what in this statement that that actually put together?
I think you guys.
It was a really great job that.
I think you guys did a great job.
He worked, it, it was, um, I think everybody really worked together, I think everybody voice was heard, we felt the urgency to hear, and I think they came to really good decisions that made I think appreciated and valued. It was very good. It, it, the level of respect in meetings was incredible, and, you know, we have a great, um, team of Paris, of course, that's all, all around, not just Paris, even though they are amazing. And they were realistic, you know, we did we want this on the moon, the stars, the sky, absolutely, but they were also very understanding that we literally couldn't give them everything we wanted to, or that we think they deserved, but they met us in the middle of a lot of things, so it was, it was a great, uh, great process. How this works is when we get through the budget process, this would be a separate one. Be originally included in the budget, so we will be separate. And we outlined on page two that warrant article will be with thirty, the thirty thousand, one seventy-six.
Just that, just.
We have to notice the two years, but the amount that will be raised for this year's budget will be the thirty thousand.
Wait, yeah, I just never turned it over.
No, I definitely didn't have.
You know. I just had one side.
Something to note, too, is that this is only the second contract that they have to negotiate, so funds are still being locked out. That position is a fact, this one. Give a new contract, it's, you can't, you're not gonna get it right the first time. Do you need a vote?
We need a vote, we need a motion.
You need to round it up.
Yeah.
Vote to round. Make a motion to ratify the support staff. CBA? Yes. To reflect the changes.
Thank you, second. With the special questions about. Hearing none, uh, all those in favor of ratifying new CBA support staff, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, signify by saying nay.
Sentences?
Sentences, I can vote for this.
You can vote for it, okay.
No sentences, and that's motion, Paris.
And I would like to extend a thank you to the support staff team that is negotiating on a great work.
Thank you for, uh, who doesn't participate in the struggles as well. Bonds for elementary education.
So we would like to move forward with entry into with the one thing, and there's a lot of paperwork that goes along with the bond or, or any taxes, um, bonding or or notes, um, anyway, so the next step in the process, we have supplied a lot of information to them, the next step in the process is the bond bank loan agreement. When we put, I can copy into the packet, and the law, the loan agreement is by between the issuer and the bond bank, so we, we just have to print the, sign the loan agreement, and then we have to then certify, let me certify the vote authorized on bond agreement. So it's kind of like this two-step process. So there's a law agreement by between the issuer and the bond bank, and then there's a certificate regarding the adoption of the vote by the issuers governing on the school board, authorizing the issuer school board to enter into the loan agreement with and sell its bond to the bond. We have the documents here that will have to be signed, and some of them delivered tomorrow. You know, it does say in the, in the loan agreement that the, the rate, because we don't know what that rate is yet, um, but it can't be any higher than two point two five percent, and again, the lowest rate I got from those both the bags was two and a half percent. The last bond sale in July, bond rates were, it's still less than it was. Right now, we're at five for ten here.
Make the motion to yeah, how would you like the, I guess, how, what do we need to have as this?
We have to hereby certify that a meeting of the governing board of issuers look issuers governing board authorizing the issuer to enter into the loan agreement and with and sell its bond to the bond. And we need the full resolution.
The governing body will need to take a vote to authorize the issuer to enter into the loan agreement with and to sell its bond to the bank.
So I will accept the motion, uh, to into an, into an agreement with the issuer to end to sell our bonds. Thank you, Joe.
Good question.
Yes.
Looking on the management's of one bank. So we got the same here that the bond sale won't be held until January shift. Yeah, but we have to make a commitment by tomorrow for the January shift, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Um, and if you commit tomorrow, and on January shift, when the bond bank goes out, that rates are lower, can you get out of that commitment? Or at some point between now and then? Now, this is, tomorrow's the deadline for meeting of the participants governing bulletwood with certificate of vote to enter into the agreement. I don't think we can pull out after tomorrow. We just don't understand how it works, so. The, the. Because they're gonna gather all of the people that are going out. Right, but in the, I'm just trying to think, in the past, like with the, the towns entering into getting different bonds and whatnot, we don't even have our bond hearings until the first week of February. And then, so we have to enter into that bond agreement, the agreement in January, like everybody else does. So we have the option of the bond bank. But then we have our public hearings, first Friday, February, right around then, which will come. And we have our public hearings and whatnot, and then we move forward with our bond or our loan, and at that point, we decide to stay with the bond bank or go to a bank. Depending on, and we, right now, we have one bond at, at the, at the bond bank, we have one loan with Citizens and a loan with Union Bank, because after the bond hearing, and then the vote in March, that's the, the um, rates were better at we didn't have to stay with the bond bank, and that's, it's not always lower, and, and sometimes it's significantly lower to bank versus. I know, I mean, we've got, we've used bank. Right, right, so I'm just hesitant to walk into, and you said two point two five percent? That's the max. That's the max. The max, it says right away, we know. Right now, they're projecting one point eight five. But the, the, the national average is one point seven. For municipal loans. And I got quotes from the, the local banks at two point five, who actually at the time said, we can't compete with the bond. And, and that's, most of the time, that that's absolutely true. I just hate to walk into something and think we could do better at some point. I also would hate to not walk into it and then lose out on it, so it's kind of a kind of a mess. I've kind of been wrestling with the same things in the last couple of months. Exactly, oh, God, I don't, I don't doubt it, yeah. Okay, I'm done talking. But sometimes it's better just to talk it through. I mean, before I send it out tomorrow, we'll check that again, but tomorrow, that's why we moved everything, it was my understanding, and that's why we moved everything to get that bid in today. Right. So we could make our commitment to the bond bank tomorrow. Sure. Because I didn't want to commit, because we can't prepaid the bond. Right. Because once we're in that sale, we're locked in. I'm confident in your resilience and knowledge of the process of.
So.
Have you in the past had to commit to the project prior to the, the, the public, this is different, because we had a public hearings last year and whatnot. Yes. So say there's a new project and, and we're gonna bond a million dollars to fix whatever that's not going, so this year's warrant, would you still have to be, or would you wait for the summer sale? You should wait for the summer sale. I got you. You can always get bond anticipation notes. Right, right, right. Kind of close to that time. Right. Okay, now.
Um, okay, so there's a motion on the table to authorize the issuer to enter into a loan agreement with and to sell its bond to the bond bank. This, uh. So.
Like Jasmine, second.
Yeah.
You're close.
Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, uh, hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, some who are going to say nay. My motion carries.
Yeah, I think you have the.
Multiple tokens, I need to sign tonight.
I have five tokens.
Yes.
And me.
And the.
Yeah.
And I have to sign the certificate.
For a new business, um, LAU plans?
We already talked about that.
Strategic plan with our coach?
Yeah.
And COVID nineteen, uh, plans, so we can.
Those were the revisions?
Yeah, so let's take a look at, but you can just sort of point us to where the divisions are.
Yeah. Four, five, seven, eight.
And thirty is a whole new.
Yes. What's that?
That's, yeah.
We just don't. Yeah, they are.
Yeah. Yeah, that, we have.
Thirty is almost like a summary of every. Which is in the pages.
So I would accept the motion to, to accept the amendment to. Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? Hearing then, all those in favor, if I was saying aye. Those opposed, nay. And the motion carries.
And the rest of funds is just correlated with COVID nineteen, and all of the F O S requirements we have to finish and send back.
Only twenty-two, twenty-three budgets.
Yeah, I just put it down in case anybody had any questions, but I already just referred to that.
And if anybody, can we just email you? Email you in the meantime, if you think of something.
Oh, yeah, 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 that will be done, we'll just get the information.
Thank you.
But I did like the arrangement. That you guys came up with last week, um, when you had all the, everybody was facing. That was, that was really.
In recognition of visitors, the public participation, uh, we can't see any students, there's students, we have, that's that.
Yes, I have four things, one, um, the high school English department, Heather, Bill, and Demeter. The following students participated in school-wide annual rotary speech and competition, freshman Reed Dugay, McKenna Mack, and Stephanie Lee. Stoffmore, Mia, and Rand, and seniors Amber Wilson, Roger Robinson, and Noah Deagle. They presented speeches about how the rotary might support the community to improve values of teamwork and human spirit, and they were awesome. Moving on to the next round of the selection, Wednesday morning, which is this morning, will be Andrew, Britta, Noah, and Bree. Um, and I did see an email that Britta Robinson will be calling to.
They're excellent.
Congratulations, brother.
Also, next week, students will be in the first round of poetry out loud, competition in the English classes, so stay tuned for more details about that. And then from Rebecca Steves, grade seven, has been organizing a couple of events this week to raise money for the teen seeds. A social media challenge to help clean trash from the ocean and rivers that flow into it. Their big sale yesterday raised a hundred and twenty-five dollars and two cents, and then there's a hat sale Friday for K twelve, students to pay a dollar to wear half of the day. Grade seven wanted to make a donation towards teen seed goal, raising thirty million dollars right January first, to remove thirty million pounds of trash. So funds will help pay for the fully robot bars that pull up, pull trash from the, up from the surface, and so that volunteers can make a catch right now. So, and seems to be excited to help.
Thank you. The members of the community, either here or remotely that are interested in this thing. All this.
Oh, Lord.
Oh, okay, that's all that's it. Okay, so, um. Who any issues in non-public? Okay, then I will, uh, accept the motion to adjourn. Thank you, Tammy, thank you, Joe, all of the favors you've got saying aye. Those opposed, nay. No, all right, that's motion carries, we're adjourned, thank you.